Okay, it is 6:02 PM on March 17th. This is the Monday, this is the Thursday Special Board Meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are all five directors, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Johnson, and Acting Superintendent Kim Whitworth, executive staff and members of our staff as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Happy St. Patrick's Day, y'all. All right, members of the public can log into this special board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I don't think we had anything wild go on. We are moving on to agenda item 2.04, review of the agenda, and then 2.05, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a motion that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated March 17th, 2022?
I was trying to get my mic to unmute, sorry. I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved the agenda dated March 17th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion, a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated March 17th, 2022. Discussion, okay, all in favor, say, raise your hand. Okay, all opposed. Okay, the agenda item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to agenda item 3.01, recognition of education support professionals week. I'll hand it on over to Acting Super Kim.
I'm so sorry, I just lost everything, hang on. So, we have a proclamation. And the proclamation is, whereas educational support professionals are involved in nearly every aspect of education, maintain buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, assisting in the classrooms, providing over 60% of all instructional hours to special education, English language learners, opportunity gap students, performing and conducting research activities, providing information technology and media services, administrative support functions and safe transportation, creating a secure and healthy environment, and many other specialized services, and whereas more than 62,000 education support professionals work with and help students in Washington universities, colleges, and public schools are the backbone of our public education system and deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they do for this state and their communities. And whereas education support professionals are instrumental in fulfilling the state's responsibility to educate all students, and by supporting the learning environment, they serve as crucial partners with teachers, parents, and administrators, and school boards. Now therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 14th through 18th, 2022, as education support professionals. We have two support professionals that we would absolutely love to celebrate. The first is Stephanie Preston, who works in our business, business and finance office. And Stephanie, I have observed Stephanie since I first started working in this district, going above and beyond to support staff, seeing Stephanie work with new employees to help get them onboarded. She is the consummate professional, she is polite, she is incredibly knowledgeable, her expertise is above and beyond. She provided me a lot of help today, and we just truly thank and appreciate her. She also serves on a number of our committees, she's serving on our budget advisory committee right now. So, again, doing just so much more than, than we could ever expect. So, so thank you so much, Stephanie. And I'm looking, and I don't believe our other person is here. Hang on.
Are you looking for Janine or Janelle?
Yes, I'm looking for Janelle.
She doesn't appear to be on the screen, Kim. She, she hasn't checked in tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it, so Janelle Ackley is also a, a support professional that we truly appreciate. She has served as the PSE bargaining rep. She makes sure that we are focused on employee working conditions. She is an amazing colleague and friend to many, and we truly appreciate Janelle as well. So, thank you, Janelle, for all of your service.
Any directors?
Yeah.
What was that, Jen?
Oh, I asked if any directors had something to add or something to say. Were you done, Kim?
Yes, I'm so sorry, yes, please.
Okay.
I could keep talking about Stephanie too, if you'd like for me to do that.
Can I say something then?
Please.
Well, as a teacher, everything would utterly implode without the support professionals who are like in every single thing. They are in the trenches, elbow deep with everything, and absolutely love them from the front office to the parent educators, to the support, all the different support staff, to the office staff. Oh my gosh, and I'm married to an elementary teacher. That is like, I think Marjorie's brain would explode and leak out all over the floor, and then the kids would get grossed out. Like, I, I just, I appreciate you guys, everything that you do. I mean, it takes a village, and so I think it's awesome that we have a week that we love on them, that we honor them, that we recognize what they do, that we take time out of our day. So, thank you guys for all of you, Stephanie, thank you, Janelle, thank you, but for everybody, you know, that, that's super great that you guys just, you give so much for the students in Monroe, and you serve the staff with professionalism. So, I appreciate you guys and everything that you do sacrificing for the kids, because just like we just had in our board workshop, the kids are first, and that's exactly what you guys do. So, thank you guys for everything that you do, we appreciate you.
And Jeremiah, you remember in school, they always tell you, when you go into a school building, there are two people that are more important than anybody else other than students, and that is your office manager and your custodian, it's like.
Yeah, the front office manager is more important than the principal in any building, ever. They are the gatekeeper to everything.
Any other directors?
I just think I see Janelle coming in, and I didn't know if we wanted to say hi and thank you.
Janelle, thank you so much for being here. We just wanted to make sure that we had a chance to thank you for everything that you do. You are truly appreciated, so thank you so much for taking the time being here, and the Board of Directors are also wanting to thank you as well, so thank you.
And Janelle, thank you, and I have a certificate for you when you return.
Janelle, I, I can, it looks like you're talking, but you're muted. Janelle, we will catch up later, we have a certificate of appreciation for you, so thank you.
Wherever she is at, looks great, though, I don't, so that's kind of neat. All right, any other directors? No, all right, thank you all for so much that you do, and, and I think that Jeremiah probably does have such a better idea. I get to visit schools sometimes and see all the magic that happens, but it doesn't happen without you, and so thank you so much for helping this great big, just fluid thing that the, the school district run, just helping it run, helping kids, and, and pouring so much of your hearts and yourselves into it, so thank you so much. Okay, and then we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item 3.02, student directors, and we have Nathan and Andrew, Nate, or we'll go Andrew first with a report.
Okay. So, um, this week's been a little bit eventful. Just, I'll just, first, a quick update from Sky Valley. Um, they, we did a fire evacuation drill on, I think it was Wednesday, and that went pretty well. And I think we, no one was watching the clock, but I think, I think we all got to our places in about one or two minutes, so that was, I think maybe like two minutes, not really sure, because I wasn't looking at a clock, but talking to other students, and yeah, hopefully, hopefully that's an accurate time estimate, but, so that was pretty cool. No one seemed to panic, they seemed pretty relaxed, maybe too relaxed, but, and then, what else? Of course, the mask mandate was lifted, and so I think a lot of students are, I'm excited about that, but some students keep them on, some of them take it off, and I think there's, seems like people are respecting other people's choices, you know, those who take it off. I, at least from what I could see, they seemed like their teachers and students were trying to, you know, accept whatever choices they made, so that seemed to go pretty well. It was nice to be able to see people's faces. And what else? And then recently, I contacted Mrs. Apter from Chain Lake Elementary, and she sent me an update on what they've been doing, they've been doing a lot of stuff. They also had a, a, I'm not sure if it was a fire drill, at least it was an evacuation drill, and they were able to get everyone accounted for, and all staff and students accounted for in, I think, under five minutes, so that was, I think they're pretty happy about that, and they had a future, they had a kindergarten registration night, and they were able to get two dozen new cheetahs, so they're excited about that. I think they had, I think they had 2,000 families there, if I remember correctly, which is, I think that's the number I heard, I'm not positive, but that might be. Yeah, I'm not quite sure if I heard that correctly, but, and they also had a lot of spirit days, they had cheetah day, PJ day, western day, Disney day, and on Friday, I believe that'd be tomorrow, they're gonna have a backwards day, and I think they'll probably enjoy that a lot. And they're getting, they're hosting a Playworks representative on Tuesday. And, and what else? And also, something that kind of intrigued me was there, they started recognizing what they call cheetahs of the week, which is when they, they quote, catch a cheetah who cares, cares being an acronym for cooperative, accountable, respectful, enthusiastic, enthusiastic and safe. And two students from each class are chosen each week, and they have their picture taken for the newsletter and bulletin board, and then their names are read in the announcements. And I just thought that was, sounded like very positive program, and it sounds like something that, you know, if, if other principals are, or, you know, if other principals haven't heard of that, it seems like, it sounds like something that, for no school district would benefit from, at every school, if every single school had that in their program. And, yeah, I think, and also they had a, their, their multilingual learner teacher was wrapping up WIDA testing. And I think, yeah, I think that's about it, and, yeah, I think that's about all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Directors, do you have any questions for Andrew? Andrew, how's school going?
I'm pretty good, it's, yeah, it's, I think it's a kind of a new dynamic. Now that we're not wearing masks, it's a little bit, before, it's almost, almost feels like the first day of school in a little, in a minor way, but it's nice to see people's faces, because some people, we, it's like, oh wow, I've never seen you, you know, your face before, and, and that's kind of nice. So, I think it's going pretty well, we've been having, yeah, a pretty routine, trying to remember if there's anything really special going on. Yeah, I think it's mainly normal, we got our second archery teacher back, so now we've started actually doing archery, and we celebrated, kind of celebrated St. Patrick's Day with popping balloons with our arrows, so that was kind of cool. And actually, two students from Sky Valley, they, they're actually classmates of mine, they, they're really good Irish dancers, because Sky Valley has a Irish dancing class, I think several, and they, they're really, you know, they're really committed to, I think they've been doing it for a while, and they were able to go to Arizona, because they qualified for, I guess, national competitions, and then they're, they're twins, and the, unfortunately, the girl was, I believe, I guess she didn't move on to the next round, but the, the young man, he's a student, he was able, he qualified for Worlds, so he's, I believe, in Ireland over St. Patrick's weekend, St. Patrick's Day weekend, so that, that's really exciting, yeah, so, yeah, pretty exciting for them.
That's really neat, that's really, that's really cool, just out of little old Monroe, you know, why not?
Yeah.
That's awesome, sharing that, Andrew, it's good to see your smile.
Thank you.
Andrew, I had a couple of questions for you, did you do the donut eating contest on Tuesday, or did you, did you go witness that?
Yes, I was actually there, I didn't, I didn't sign up, but I was there, and I saw that, 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 I think that's the, before the fire drill, that was the biggest group of Sky Valley students I'd ever seen in one place. I think the fire drill topped that, because that was almost like a school assembly, but, but they were really, really excited about that, it was, it was kind of amazing. Yeah, like, there was during lunchtime, so it's like the cafeteria basically cleared out, there was like 10 or 15 people in there, and everyone just ran out and watched the, the contest, but yeah, I didn't participate, but it was fun watching that, seemed like it, I think it accomplished its goal, it, it kind of brought, brought the, the community together, and, and it was actually the leadership project of a classmate of mine, the Sky Valley has a leadership class, and so we each do a project, a kind of a service project, community project for Sky Valley, and that was her chosen project, excuse me, project, and I think it, it seemed to, seemed to do, seemed to kind of help Sky Valley and bring some joy there, so I think overall it was successful, and it was nice to be able to see, like, because I got to see some of the planning for it, and then I actually got to see it happen and come to fruition, and I think it was a big success.
Yeah, and then have you seen any of the posters up about the spring formal at Sky Valley that's gonna be happening?
Um.
Or are there flyers up yet? I heard that it was a go, that that was gonna be taking place, which is kind of exciting.
I don't know, what, what was, I'm sorry, what was the event again?
Spring formal.
Oh. Yeah, I don't think I've seen any posters, but I know there's lots of posters posted around Sky Valley, but yeah, I'm sorry, I don't think I've noticed any.
We have quite a few posters up, and the kids are super excited to be planning for a dance, it feels good to them, and, and I'm really proud of them, and I'll tell you later about a project they did to help pay for that.
That's awesome, that sounds great, Karen, I'd love to hear about that. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you so much, Andrew, I really think that we need a donut eating contest now between all five directors, though, that's just saying, go Freylands, you know, I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to do it. All right, go, moving on, Nathan, go ahead.
All right, here at the high school, we've had a great time doing S-Back testing, especially for the freshmen and sophomores, but that's lovely, not really, but has to get done. And, oh yeah, that's optional, that's really cool, and as Andrew said, here, kids are really generally respectful about this, and so that's awesome. With the extracurriculars, we've got HIQ, just what HIQ is, basically a competition of a whole bunch of different subjects, and trivia, and kids at the high school are in the team who answer questions and try to compete and win against other schools, and HIQ, just one state, and is now going to nationals, which is super exciting, and robotics is doing amazing, they did better than they've ever done before, and ranked really high at their most recent competition, and also dance is going to state, which is awesome. And moving on, we've got, I'll sing in a little bit about the vaping situation at the high school, and just something I was thinking of on how I can work from the bottom up, I think a good idea for students like me to do at the school would be to just be assertive, and when we encounter people who are vaping and stuff like that, we just ask them nicely to not do it in the bathrooms, take it outside, do something not around us, and just be assertive and be nice about it. I think something like that could be pretty productive if the students take control. And other than that, the learning continues here, it's going great.
I just want to take a moment to brag too, I've got the latest copy of the Monroe High Tie, it was waiting for me at the district office when I came in, and I love reading these each week, so I look forward to reading this.
Nice, and with that, I was talking with the president of the school newspaper, The High Tie, today, and he said that he'd be happy to interview members of the school board on anything they'd like to get interviewed on, which would be awesome.
That's awesome, Nathan, thanks for checking into that for me.
Yeah. Any questions?
A question for both student directors, is there, I think, a couple weeks ago, you might have mentioned something about the Student Advisory Council, and I'm, I'm curious if there's any planning around that, and then I also just today learned about a state group called the Washington State Legislative Youth Council that's doing some really cool work, and I'm, and they are accepting applications, was part of what I learned today, so I'm wondering if that's an organization you have any familiarity with, or if that's something you'd be interested in doing.
I haven't heard of it.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard of the second organization, but in, either, but in terms of planning for the Student Advisory Council, we were able to meet with Acting Superintendent Whitworth, and able to kind of think about that, get some, didn't really lay out a blueprint or anything, but just, we tried to figure out kind of, you know, a little bit about what direction we wanted to go, maybe think about, you know, what's the purpose of this, and, and, and just maybe see how, maybe see how other school districts have set up theirs, and just do some preliminary research, and kind of get a little bit of a foundation for setting it up.
That's awesome, that sounds like great foundational work, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Andrew and Nathan, directors, do you have any other questions? Anybody else? Awesome, thank you, Nathan and Andrew, for your reports and for showing up here, and for sharing all of that information with us.
No problem.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item 3.03, legislative report, Director Whitfield, you ready?
I asked that Director Johnson make the report for me.
You bet, so I can do that, thank you, Chuck, I appreciate you reaching out. I have a lot to share, so I will try to keep it concise, and then I would just invite anybody who has interest in, in talking more. There's, there's a lot of information coming, so the dust is still sort of settling on the legislative session that just ended on the 10th, and I am also really excited about some of what is coming up for the interim, so I'll talk a little bit about legislation that did pass, so we had the enrollment stabilization, it's my understanding that Monroe won't benefit from that, but there are, I think they said 203, 233 districts in the state that will benefit, and then there's also the physical, social, and emotional support enhanced allocations, those ratios will phase in from the 2022, 23 through the 2024, 25 school years. I think that that's something that, as our, as a budget committee, if we vote to have one, is working on, that'll be an important piece for them to take a look at, I think is also a huge win for our certified staff who we are celebrating this week, and so that felt like a good, a good bit of legislation to be able to bring to the district today. There is also legislation about a behavioral health pilot, where OSPI is going to be collaborating with a nonprofit entity to bring more access to students in order to connect them with mental health services or behavioral health services, and on a personal note I can share, or from a professional note I can share, this is something that the Department of Limon Industries also did, and it really increased services to injured workers in Washington State, so I would hope to see the same thing coming for students of Washington, and I think it's a great focus on helping students through challenging situations. And, let's see, there's so, so much that happened, so there's a lot of analysis of the legislation that has happened, there are still some bills that are waiting to be signed by Governor Inslee, and so a couple of resources for people to check out, WASDA is going to publish their new in session tomorrow, you can go, you can actually subscribe to that, so it automatically gets sent to you, but it's also always posted on the WASDA website under Strategic Advocacy, and so they'll have some analysis there, there's also the WASDA twio, how is it pronounced, Chuck? T W I O, I think is what it is.
Yeah, this, this weekend Olympia.
Yeah, so that is another spot for analysis, and then where I learned about that Washington State Legislative Youth Council was at a webinar that was hosted by the Education Voters of Washington. I attended that today, and it was really cool to see a bunch of different panelists from different advocacy groups coming together to share what was important to them that happened during legislation, that youth council, so I, I've been going to the WASDA LedRec learns, and, and their sort of updates about the legislative session, and that's been really useful, but I enjoyed going to the webinar today, because it shared some different perspectives or different players in education legislation and, and their perspective on what happened, especially hearing from the students, they were really excited about student reps being on the State Board of Education, I think that's an awesome advancement, also, and this one is yet to be signed, but, but is there, that's the, excuse me, is a full-time employee to connect youth with those mental service providers, and then one that was, that was really interesting, or I guess unexpected, was a student who brought up Senate Bill 5546, which lowers the price of insulin, and it was something that, you know, people maybe initially didn't think had to do with education, but this student really shared that for them, and that for families, they know, it has a huge impact on that family's finances and their ability to then, or their resources that they have to then engage in education, and I thought that that was an incredible way of thinking creatively and broadly about solutions to challenges that people in Washington State face, so I really appreciated that. Um, lots of, lots of really cool groups, another one that I learned about today was the Office of Education OnBud, OnBuds, excuse me, that's another excellent resource for people to check out, and these are all people who are really engaged in advocacy work for our students, during the WASDA networking call today, they're, they're, they always start the call with a quote, and their quote today was, all advocacy is at its core, an exercise in empathy, and that's something that Samantha Power, who is a former US Ambassador to the United Nations said, and, and that really struck a chord with me, and I think it's a spot that we we as a board and as individual board members can do a lot of work in. So in the, the interim that, that Wasta has, there are, or that the legislation has, Wasta has 239 positions that have been adopted by all of the members. And they're currently in a review session of that. And then different directors can make recommendations or different districts can make recommendations about places where they see gaps. You know, policies or, or positions that they think need to be updated or expanded. And so as a board, I think that that would be really exciting work for us to do. So that's again, in that in session, you'll see where there's a call to action section. And I think it would be awesome if we could take a look at that and President Bumpus, maybe at a future time, talk about being able to do some of that work. At it off there, there really is, I have notes all over the place. I think a lot of people felt really excited about this legislative session. And, and just for me as an advocate, it's excited to know that there's more work to do in the interim and, and more coming. And thank you, Director Whitfield, for the opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you, Director Johnson. Directors, do you have any questions or anyone, any questions for Director Johnson?
I had one. Director Johnson, we have to be formal, right? I really liked that you brought up the, the input that the districts can do. Did the session provide steps for how we would participate in something like that? Or do we know what that would look like?
Yes. So we have, so the 239 positions are all posted if you go to their webpage. And so we can review those individually or as a group. And then from April 1st through the 20th, and they called, they referred to it as their spring cleaning. But that is the period when we can, we can present anything that we want to them about what we would want added or, or changed or altered in any way.
That's the window of time that we have to do.
That is the window. So it is quick. It is quick, but you know, until April 20th, so we wouldn't have to do it immediately. We've got a little bit of time to take a look. And I really think it's, I think it's worth doing. It was, it's so exciting to see the work that people are doing at the state level and, and working together. So I think there's some great opportunity there.
Thank you so much. There's a lot of information. That's awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Oh, I just want to thank Director Johnson for, for filling in for me. I had some things come up and wasn't able to adequately provide a good update. So thank you. And I know that was of real interest to you and you're very good at that. So thanks for, thanks for taking care of that. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Okay, moving on to agenda item 4.01, audience comments. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our webs and on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. We welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes and concerns. I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, if several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to their representative. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you're here for that reason, please contact any staff member and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware, be aware that if at any time during a speaker's comments, their words begin to approach a personnel concern, I will remind the speaker once to keep the comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff-related comments, I will give 30 seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, please contact any staff member to help with how to move forward with a complaint about personnel. You may provide, oh, actually we'll just get right into public comments. Okay. Keith, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am. So our first person who signed up does not appear to be on the screen this evening. So, so Sean doesn't appear to be here, but it looks like Dwayne is here. So should I go ahead and promote him here and let him in? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Dwayne. Hello?
Sorry, my microphone was turned off.
No worries. That never happens on Zoom. Dwayne, can I please have you share your name and your relationship to the school district?
Uh, yeah, my name is Dwayne Mock. I'm a first grade teacher at Maltby Elementary and executive member of the Monroe Education Association.
Okay. And I believe you're speaking on behalf of the group.
Yes. Yeah. It still will only take me about three minutes, but that's okay.
Just in case.
Yes.
Go ahead, Dwayne.
All right. So on Tuesday, February 15th, a group of seven educators from across Monroe School District did a site visit to Sky Valley Education Center. With all the bad press lately, we wanted to get a feel for ourselves what was really happening and to see firsthand what was needed. We spent two and a half hours walking around this unique campus and experienced a small amount of the magic that happens there. From the moment we walked on campus, we felt welcome. The community environment with a focus on learning and bettering yourself was amazing. We were amazed at the creativity literally painted onto the walls and the ceilings of the program, as well as the individualized education that each student is receiving. For many of us, it was the first time that we even began to comprehend the expanse of all that Sky Valley Education Center has to offer. We heard about a multi-tiered graduation pathways, the creative ways students and teachers access their learning, and just the tip of the variety being offered there. We heard many success stories and were in awe of all the vocational, hands-on learning opportunities. It was truly astounding and I thought this was what education should be. This visit, however, was actually focused on the needs of the teachers and the students. The multiple ways that the buildings have fallen short in that way have to, that have fallen short in what they have to offer for the program, but also fallen short in simply meeting the standards of a safe working and learning environment. In just two and a half hours, we noticed a multitude of issues, including bathrooms that were not locked, located in a safe place for students to access and the lack of ADA compliance within those restrooms. Imagine being a wheel, in a wheelchair and needing to use the restroom and the only option for you was a stall that didn't have walls. Doesn't everyone deserve the same privacy and respect when using the restroom? None of the classrooms had working window coverings, meaning that in the event of an active intruder or emergency where a lockdown or shelter in place was needed, none of the classrooms could be considered a safe place. Keep in mind, this was, is an open campus with busy streets on either side of the school property, easily accessible to anyone who wanted to enter campus. We saw things like downspouts shooting water out onto the sidewalks, light switches that provided an extra buzz when being turned on or off, peeling paint, cocking around windows that was clearly molding and cracked windows, window glass that had been replaced with Plexiglas, which provides inadequate insulation for the building, lack of safe drinking water within the classroom pods, and two condemned portables sitting on the playground without adequate safety fencing to protect from wandering students. When we inquired about these portables, we were told they were just too expensive to remove. Isn't a lawsuit due to injury from a student review retrieving a state, a stray playground ball more expensive? Additionally, there were broken water fountains, exposed wires in common areas, unsafe drinking water in the student store, which essentially shut down their coffee and smoothie bar, which dominoes into affecting their own ASB funds. Near the end of the tour, we were brought to the music room and were disheartened to see that this space was not ADA acceptable and students, staff and parents with mobility issues are simply not able to access this music program. While that list is just the tip of the iceberg, the biggest thing we learned from our tour is that Sky Valley Education Center should be the crown jewel of the Monroe School District. Its variety of programs, individualized access to education and parent partnership should be the headline of our district. But it, you have chosen to place them in a building that should have been condemned before they even moved in. Ask any employee from the former Monroe Middle School. We, the Monroe Education Association, believe that all students and staff should be safe in their learning and working environments. On this account, you, the Monroe School District, have work to do. Instead of trying to sweep Sky Valley Education Center under the rug, we should be working together to expand this program for more access to all students. We should be leading the example, we should be a leading example to this greater Snohomish County. We would like to collaborate on some creative solutions with all interested parties. Sky Valley Education Staff, MEA, MSD, the school board and the community. If you haven't taken the time, taken the time to know Sky Valley Education Center, we encourage you to look into this gem of a program. It is much more than the homeschool options that many of us assumed it was before our visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Is she on, Keith?
It just attempted to promote her. Here she comes.
Thanks, Keith.
You bet.
Janine? Janine, can you hear me?
Sorry, I got.
No worries. Can I please have your name and your relationship to the school district?
I'm Janine Burkhart. I'm in the community for over 30 years. Thank you to the Board of Directors for listening to the public comment. I'm sincerely heartened by the change of events that have lifted the requirement of forcing masks on children and staff. Please know and be fully informed that we as the community and parents are aware that this was an unwise plan of action against children who are not susceptible to detrimental results when they were to catch COVID. We also want to hold you accountable for any teacher who willingly shames or bullies any student for wearing or not wearing a mask. This choice is the students and the parents. If the teachers or any teacher are still too fearful to teach children who do not wear masks, we urge the board to discuss with that teacher a different line of work. There are many willing teachers who would gladly enjoy the opportunity to teach children in a normal teaching in person capacity. We urge the school district not to force mandates, shut down the schools or force any vaccines regarding COVID in the future. Otherwise, there will be masked students exiting the school system. The psychological health of our children is of utmost importance and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Janine.
Okay, President Bumpus, I think this is the right Denise. Hopefully it is. If not, well, we can make changes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna try one more time. President Bumpus, I, they may be having technical issues.
Do we want to go on to, we want to Todd and come back?
Yes, ma'am. That, that would be my recommendation at this point.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. Thanks, Keith.
Okay, here comes Todd.
Hi, Todd.
Hi.
Hi, can you please state your name and your relationship to the district?
Yeah, my name is Todd Johnson and I actually am a graduate of Monroe High School and been a supporter of Monroe High School for a number of years through the foundation and directly with the district itself. And then I also have three kids that currently attend or have attended Monroe Schools.
Awesome. Go ahead, Todd. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah. So I'm here to talk about field use and I did this letter to each of, able to review. That would be great. I'm not going to go into all the details of that letter because it kind of stands on its own, but I did have a little more information I wanted to pass along. Before I do that, I wanted to be sure and just thank each of you as a board members and a staff for what has been a very difficult time the last couple of years with COVID and everything else going on. And I just appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put in. I can't imagine how hard it's been for all of you, so thank you for that. When it comes to field use, again, a little bit of additional information. I actually had a practice scheduled with my team last night, which we had to cancel due to field conditions. If you remember yesterday, it was at six or at five o'clock, it was about 55 degrees and sunny. But we were scheduled to play at, or practice at Sky River. And because of the rainstorm that happened the night before, the fields were completely unusable. And so this is one of the unfortunate consequences where dirt fields, a lot of times can, you cannot play on. Whereas the turf fields, you could easily play on those fields. And it was unfortunate because a number of the fields that the school district owns on their turf were available for use and we weren't able to use them. So we just had to cancel practice. And this will happen throughout the season with canceling games as well. And so that's another piece to this. I'm actually sitting here about to walk into my middle daughter's band concert at Hidden River. And again, there was rain and so undoubtedly some of the practices that were scheduled tonight were canceled. And I'm looking over here to my left at the Hidden River Field and it's empty. So it would just be a great opportunity for us to be able to realize the valuable asset that we have and how can we share it with the community as opposed to having it locked and kept away from the community. And I'll also add to that, that I've coached basketball in the Boys and Girls Club as well as softball here in the Little League. And most of the kids that I coach are Monroe School kids. So we're really helping the kids that we're serving, even if it isn't directly through the schools. We're helping those kids, but it's important to point out too, that the growing number of the kids I coach are homeschooled. And I think it's important as we're looking to try to pass a levy that we're engaging all kids in our community and all families in our community, even those that have chosen alternative educational programs. And how do we as a district provide value to those students who've chosen to get their education otherwise? So that they'd be willing to support our levy. And I think field use is one of those ways that we can connect with those families to help pass this levy that I know is so important to our funding. So I just wanted to bring those points. What I really hope you can do is get this as an agenda item so that you guys can discuss it for your next meeting. So I urge you to do that so that we can have a conversation amongst the community. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Todd. Hi, Mary.
Hello, how are you?
Good. How are you? Good, how are you?
We're good.
Can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
My name is Mary Mueller. I am the president of Sky Valley Little League. That is a nonprofit that provides support to over fifty percent, fifty percent of our families are Monroe School District families. I am hoping to relate to an issue currently affecting both of our organizations. Last June, a new facility price plan was passed that raised the cost of field rentals from four dollars and seventy-five cents an hour to fifty dollars an hour. We were not aware of the price change until this February, when we placed reservations and found what would have cost us sixteen hundred dollars for the season would now cost us seventeen thousand dollars for the season. As a nonprofit, we simply could not afford that and had to cancel our field use. We are now forced to turn families away as we no longer have any field space to house extra teams, while many school fields sit empty with no rentals on the calendar from now until the end of the school year. I have looked into what other surrounding school districts charge for their fields. And Monroe is twenty to thirty dollars an hour higher than Snohomish, Sultan, Riverview, and Duval, Everett, and North Shore. Sky Valley would like to open a dialogue with the Facility Director and the Acting Superintendent to find a compromise on the cost for the fields for the benefit of our shared community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
So, President Bumpus, it looks like Denise might be there. So I'm gonna go ahead and promote her now. Whenever, are you, is that okay? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Denise? Denise?
So Denise, you are muted at this time. We can't see you either, but that's not, that's not, that's not a big deal. We'd just like to hear you as all. So you are muted, though.
Is there, is there a way to send her a chat or like a nudge or?
I did. Denise, why don't you try talking to us now? She's unmuted, but we can't hear her, obviously.
I don't mean to interrupt, but possibly there may be a button on, if she's using a laptop, there may be a button on the, on the side closest to the screen that she may need to push in order to be heard.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew.
Um, Denise?
Yeah, it seems like she's having some technical issues there at President Bumpus.
Okay, um, can we, we have her email address, and so maybe we can contact, just email and see if, or contact her and see if she'd like to email something to the board. If we can't get it to work.
I can do that for you.
Thank you, Jenny. Oh, it's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, President Bumpus, let's give her just a second because it looks like she's trying to reconnect.
Denise?
Oh, that's.
Okay, so yeah, let's go ahead and do that then, Jenny. Um, thank you. And then Denise, I'm so sorry, we can't hear you. Okay, let's go ahead and moving on to the agenda, we will go to Agenda Item Five, Superintendent and Staff Reports. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues earlier and either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, her staff, and through outside research. Okay, and we will go on to five point zero one CTE report, and it looks like we have Shannon.
Hello, thank you. Thank you for having me here. Really excited to start this. Keith, I'm good to go with sharing screen? Okay, so I'm here on behalf of our Career and Technical Ed program. And we had originally been scheduled to do this last month, but, which was during CTE month. So I just also wanted to say thank you to all of our CTE staff that are doing a fantastic job and celebrate them. So with that start, I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully you guys can all see that. So celebrating last month was CTE month, but we're just moving on. So as part of that, I just wanted to kind of show you just a view of, this is a, like, a quick look at all of our CTE staff, both of our support staff that we're celebrating this week, as well as our certificated staff and everybody that works in our CTE program. So it's a pretty giant program. We have classes at both Hidden River Park Place and at Monroe High School, which both Directors Johnson and Bumpus had a chance to come view with me this week, which was a blast. And I'm so glad you guys got to do that. So, um, so knowing that you have all of these slides and probably have already reviewed them, and I'm not gonna go through every slide and read them to you, but know that there's some staff updates there. I did wanna talk about our CTE program budget because we, it is a really unique set of funds that come to us, and it's made up of several different things. And just kind of want to give an overview of what that is. So to begin with, we have several grants that we've received this year, including a Carl Perkins Grant, which is a pretty standard district grant that allows to us, us to offer further enhancement to our, our career and tech ed programs. We also received a Core Plus Aerospace and Manufacturing Grant that allows us to fund specifically our aerospace and Core Plus program that we have a partnership with Boeing with. And then we received two case grants for twenty thousand dollars that help our ag science programs specific to different content for each of them. And then, as I, you've heard some of our, our stories about robotics from Nathan. Earlier today, we are up and running with a robotics program this year that is doing really, really well. And in part, that is because we were able to receive a grant that is helping us to fund that. So, and, and the first robotics is, while the, the club itself is not a CTE program, the actual class is, and so we're, it kind of, they run kind of in conjunction with one another. Then we have our, oops, sorry about that. Our, our general CTE funds, which is enhanced funds that we received from the state and federal programs. And it is a separate budget than our, the remainder of our, the rest of our school budget. So it doesn't, it has some different spending rules to it as opposed to the other, other district budgets. So we started with a large amount there, primarily all of that goes to staffing, and then we use it, the rest. Oh, my gosh, sorry, my mouse is very, very sensitive today. Let me get back to the right screen. So it's, we use those funds. We have both middle school and high school funds, and they both come in and they support all of the staff that I showed you on that earlier screen. And then the rest of it goes to students. So it's, one of the rules for CTE is that it has to be spent in the year that it is awarded. So we have been working diligently to try to use those funds because unfortunately, if we don't use them, we lose them. And as Brenda will tell me frequently, I need to spend a certain amount, or we actually, we actually hurt ourselves. And so we are always trying to kind of keep on pace. So while we are being very cognizant, I note, as a district, to look at our spending, with CTE, it's a little bit different. We need to actually use that, those funds so that we can support our students now, and they don't all roll over, although that would be nice if that was the case. They also have very limited uses of what they can be spent on. So there are things that we can spend it on, and there are things we cannot. So, for example, our Perkins Grant, we spend primarily to support professional development for stu, staff. And because we can use it to do a little bit more than we can with some of those CTE funds. So the majority of our CTE funds go to both staff and, again, to support our classes. So each of our classes have, have funds that are awarded to them, and that's in order so that they can keep with our industry standards that we're expected to work with. So, um, a couple of just highlights, again, I'm not gonna go through the whole slide here for some of our program updates, but we have done a lot of reorganization this year and realignment to try to get our, some of our programs that were a little out of compliance back into, into range. To do that, we took some classes that we had organized under different titles, and we put them all under the six recognized state and national programs that are, exist in CTE. And I'm gonna go through those here in just a second, but, and done quite a bit of alignment, realignment with both course catalog and course descriptions. One of the really exciting things we've done this year is we started a CTE class at Leaders in Learning, which we've never had any CTE programs there before because their ALEs are not funded by CTE. But we felt we had the ability to start a class there and offer that to our students. We have a teacher, Rachel McKay, who was already doing a lot of an ag science program there. And so she's been collaborating with our MHS teachers and developing a program there. So it's been very exciting for kids as well as both MHS and leaders staff. So we're doing quite a bit of PLC work in our CTE program and starting that, which is a unique challenge, given that it's a group of singletons, but we're finding ways to do that. And it's, it's pretty exciting, and we're, we're really looking forward to how we're doing that. One of the things that we are right in progress with is we're increasing dual credit and industry-recognized credentials in all of our preparatory CTE classes, which will allow students to have college experiences that they can take on to, on their transcripts and then use them further in life to help in job opportunities or in whichever area they choose to go, whether it's college or not. And then, as I said, we're really working on some of those compliance issues. I share the program standards that we are, we're working with and really working to get in line there. I could go into all of those, but they're linked there. The other piece, part of our Perkins spending that we are using is also, we just actually hired this person a few weeks ago. But our, the CTE directors for Snohomish County, we, I collaborate with them regularly. And we have hired somebody through the Muckeltoe School District using some of each district's Perkins Funds. It was very small for us because other districts are much larger and receive more Perkins Funds because of their size. But they, we hired a CLA comprehensive local needs assessment, which is something I present to you guys in the fall. But that each community and each district is responsible to do for, for compliance in CTE. And we hired a coordinator that will help us organize all of our programs because some of the stakeholders that we have to have in information we need to include is countywide or community-wide. It doesn't just necessarily end at district boundaries. Okay, so questions on that stuff before I get to the fun stuff? Okay, I'm going to the fun stuff. So those of you who've been on the board or seen some of these in the past, my favorite, favorite thing in the whole world to do this time of year is celebrate our CTE students because those are the ones that we're all doing this for. So as I said, I'd kind of go through each of our programs. This is ag science, so agriculture sciences. We have two teachers in this program, and they, both of them have the opportunity to work with Lacy Peterson. Lacy's a senior this year who has taken every single end class that we offer. And she is also active in our CTSO, our Career and Tech Student Organization. CTE is known for its acronym, so I'm sorry if I use too many, and you don't tell me if you don't know what they mean. FFA is Future Farmers of America. Lacy has qualified to attend State in Employment Skills and Veterinary Sciences, those two events. So she's doing that. And then she has also earned a State FFA degree for her agri-science research project, which is kind of a big deal. So really excited to have Lacy. And I got to meet Lacy at the fair this summer, and she is just, she is so cute walking around for cows. And she is, she knows all about all of the all. So it, I know Director Whitfield, as a former FFA person, this has gotta be something that you enjoy. So, so she's, she's a great kid. As I said, program highlights, we did have those two case grants come in. And then we also had another student we're seeking in another celebration. Chloe Lewis was ranked sixteen in the nation for her agri-science fair project in October. So way to go, kiddos. So another student is Anna Aguilar Lemus, and she is coming to us from Park Place. And she is just adorable, by the way, but, but she is using her feedback, and the teacher gives feedback, and she's getting lots of, like, revising and using, demonstrating a lot of leadership both inside and outside of class. And the favorite example that I got from the teacher on this was that she uses videos embedded in her assignments to use Google Translate so that, to help her with the language. And when she doesn't, once she learns it, she's teaching other students and helping them translate. So I think that's pretty amazing, and I'm very excited to get to interact with her once she gets up to the high school. So the program highlight, we have digital teachers from both Hidden River and Park Place are actively collaborating. Deanna Hermes, our Digital Learning Director, is also assisting with that, but they are working together at both schools on the same concepts, working through those standards and completing PLC work as well. So Genevieve Martin is our next one, and she's also in Business and Marketing Program at Computer Science. She's at the high school in AP Computer Science. She has, is made her class better. She's found, and she's continuing on with this. She was also nominated for a couple of scholarships through our STEM work as well, and she's also an amazing kiddo. Program highlights, we have several students who are pursuing computer science for post-secondary education, and we're working with Snohomish County STEM Network to develop kind of a county-wide pathway for computer sciences that we're hoping that we can use to do that. We had several students go to a state conference for DECA, six who are competing at nationals in April. And then we also adopted, as you all know, a new personal finance curriculum. Carson Moen, also at Park Place, he's in our Skilled in Tech Sciences Manufacturing Class. And Mr. McCutcheon says he consistently demonstrates leadership. He creates exceptional projects and strives for excellence. He's habitually models the Puma Way, which I think is super fun. And he is just a great kid. Mr. McCutcheon said he was very sad to see him leaving, so we'll see how he, he does up at MHS as well. So we were able to buy a lot of new equipment and help with repairs at Park Place this year with some of our funds as a highlight. We also have Mateo. Mateo is a skilled in technical science student at a high school. He's in our engineering classes. He's also been a part of our Core Plus program, and he's applied. We have, because we have a partnership with Boeing through our Core Plus program, our students can receive a certificate that allows them, after completing two years, that allows them to go to Boeing and have kind of a leg up in the hiring process. They also have an internship that our students can apply for, and Mateo has actually applied for that. So we're very excited and kind of on pins and needles, waiting to see what happens there. He also really, because of COVID, some of our, our club and organizations that are tied to CTE kind of, kind of went and depleted a bit because we just didn't have the capacity to run clubs while we were not actually meeting with them, especially ones that require a lot of hands-on work. And so Mateo really helped our new teacher, Haley Morton, who's teaching the, the Core Plus program, really helped her to inspire her to bring back some of that work with an engineering club and is really working with her on that. So we're really excited. Mateo's a senior, so he's graduating this year. We're also, one of the new things that we're gonna be doing is next year, because this program's growing, we're offering an engineer, an engineering design. we're offering an engineer, an engineering design two class next year, which I know Nathan had asked me about um earlier. So we are doing that. Um oh gosh, right? Okay, yep. Okay, Colin is, Colin Rush is next. Um Colin is in our um in Arts and Community, the Skill and Technical Science Arts and Communications. So this is kind of the um the our yearbook, our graphic design, our photography, some of those classes. Um Colin is really passionate about graphic design. Um and this is coming from Ms. Hudson, who's our yearbook advisor, um which is part of that program. Um he's spent a bunch of time just making uh graphics and helping, coming in and helping Photoshop and do that with um the students who are working on the yearbook. Um he's always on task and he uh likes to make graphics just as a hobby for um what he uses with his race, a racing hobby as well. Um uh I also wanted, in this group, I just, as a program highlight, I want to give a shout out to Stephanie Hudson, who is our yearbook advisor and our graphic design teacher. Um I feel like I work with some of the the best teachers out there and I'm really, really blessed to work with the group I do. But Stephanie, I want to highlight because if it weren't for her during the last two years, um we wouldn't have had the really necessary and important archive of a yearbook at Monroe High School. She um came in and worked day after day, weekend after weekend, every break, um hourless, ever hours upon hours, tireless, uh working to just make sure that that happened. Um she worked with her students even when she couldn't see her students. Um was sending, got as creative as a person could get, sending them out to try to get photos where they could. Um but it, she poured her heart and soul into that and I I just really want to make sure she's recognized for it. Um next kiddo, um Olivia Arrepin, I hope I said that correctly. Uh um Olivia's in our Family Consumer Science Program at Park Place Middle School with Ms. Bannon. Um and she uh has learned, kind of taught herself how to do some of these things but and done above and beyond, took some of the quilting things that were laying around, took up home and then completed a whole quilt. Um she's been in the program for three years and has uh dedicated a lot of time to kind of building her skills. And um as Ms. Bannon is also going to miss her. I heard a lot of that this year. Uh one of the uh, one of the things Ms. Bannon wanted to include, um we did some revisions at Park Place that the board had approved a year ago, a year or two ago, um because they, we were, didn't initially have stoves and ovens in there and we were able to complete that work just recently. It finally is completed and she is loving it. Um several of us got a chance to go into her room and view her potato feed um at the end of the semester. And it was a joy to see kids just really, really excelling in that room. Um other Family Consumer Sciences this time at the high school, um we have Annie. Um Annie is, has enrolled again in almost every Family Consumer Science class we offer. And she excelled in each of them. Both, all three of the teachers in this program uh were celebrating her. Um she's taken advantage uh to take uh every advanced level of class, even when they're not required. She's gone above and beyond. Um and uh she really has master, mastery in several of her classes, including um ASL, is my understanding. Um but she's a great deal of fun. Um and then uh we got a chance to actually see some of this um with Directors Bumpus and Johnson the other day. But our ASL uh team is also collaborating with our World Language Department for immersion techniques using the owl strategies. And uh this group had a huge workload this year because it was their year annually, every five years. We um every program has to do a new uh program approval with OSPI and we just completed that for our Family Consumer Science Program as well. Uh McKenna Gamble um is our health sciences, so this is like our sports med um program specifically. Um we also have our forensics and um cell biotech in this area. Uh McKenna uh Gamble, I think I said that, uh it's completed a hundred and eighty hours in the required practicum in November. Um this is a year-long commitment and she did that in November. So um she has uh Martin Weldrup, um our the, our teacher, who also is our athletic trainer, who helps supervise this program. Uh he said she's literally almost been at more practices than he has. Uh and uh she did, attended every single football practice. She goes during all the breaks and off sessions, weekends. She's always there. Um she's a junior who um they're actually really excited to say she's a junior because that means she's coming back next year. Um and she's our current sports med club for WSTMSA, which is another acronym acronym to say sports med club, um is our current president. Um we are in the middle of a health curriculum adoption, which is um I believe uh you're going to hear about a little bit later. But um she's, we also realigned the sports med courses here. Um in our Skill and Technical Sciences fam, whoops, sorry, this is kind of the robotics area. This is at the, at Park Place. Uh again, Mr. McCutcheon, uh we have Corbin Adam, Adamson. My gosh, sorry. I know how to say that. It's just my going, trying to go fast. Uh the uh Corbin is an outstanding student in our robotics program who shows both leadership um skill and high degree of proficiency at the robot programming phase. Um uh Mr. McCutcheon also says he's kind and considerate uh and always willing to help his peers and teachers. Um one of the things I think is really exciting about our robotics program, um which I will continue on the the last uh slide here, is that uh we are really able to build a pathway from middle school all the way through high school. And that's something we're really, uh that was one of the projects that I set for a goal for myself this year to try to get going. And I'm very excited about the um the progress we've made. And we were going to see several students, I think, um moving forward with this in the future. So uh and my last student that I want to celebrate here is, oops, I missed Corbin. I forgot that. Sorry, I have two screens. Um there's Corbin, he's cute. Um is, and I think you guys might know a guy who looks a lot like this, but Luke Pearl. Uh um not to be confused with Nathan. Um and I, I can't see Nathan on my screen anymore, but if he's still at the high school, I think it's because he's waiting for Luke. Um and because of our robotics program. So um Mr. Byer, our new teacher in robotics this year, uh was really um happy to nominate Luke. He's constantly pushing his peers and teammates to do bigger and better things. In his words, he is a born engineer and project manager. Um and with his background, he would know much better than I do. Um but uh that, as as you heard earlier, um the robotics program is doing amazing. Um we ranked twelve out of thirty-three, which is the highest our Monroe School District team has ever rated. And I would say that's a celebration for both of our middle school programs as well as our high school program. Um and if you guys have never seen robotics competitions, I hadn't till my own son was in the program in a different, in a different district. Um it is wild. Um there's a video linked here. I don't want to take up the time to show it. But if if you haven't seen it, it's amazing. Our robot number is seven, six, two, seven. Um and it is fast and we score a lot of points, so it's very exciting. Um our last competition uh is this weekend and um we're hoping to do really well at Snohomish High School this weekend. And then um if we do well enough, we make qualify for the state competition and we're, we're, I'm fingers crossed because it's, it's a lot of fun. So um we are uh happy to be celebrating this program and building it as we go. Okay, um I just kind of included all of our acronyms here so that you could see them. I'm not going to spend time going over them, but these are all of our official CTSOs. We don't have, I put first robotics on here because even though it's not an officially recognized one by the state, um it's really a part of our CTE program, although it's not funded that way. We're funding it out of the uh the grant. So um anyway, thank you guys so much. I know you guys are all huge uh proponents of career tech ed and I really appreciated the support. Um I know our teachers do as well. And I hope our students feel that we're, we're working on growing those programs and and giving them more opportunities so that they can be successful. Really, really appreciate guys. And I think I took up my allotted time, so I'm going to stop. Any questions?
I just want to say, um thank you so much. It, the tour of the high school was awesome. As a um vocational counselor, you can imagine that career and technical education is is near and dear to my heart. And um it was, I was so impressed by the students being supported in their passions and opportunity for the sort of interdisciplinary learning to go on. Where because they are doing core classes at the same time as they're doing these bucket-filling courses that are setting them on pathways to future success, it, it's just builds and grows. And I just so appreciate all of the support that our district provides um and that the teachers and staff provide to those students. It's, it's an incredible program, so thank you.
Thank you. Um I know that, you know, we could geek out on this forever because uh it's, it's something we both love so much. But I um it's, you know, as a, as a Monroe graduate from Monroe's CTE program, it means so much to me to be able to give back to this community and um this program specifically. So I, I, I can't more, I cannot be more sincere in my thanks. So thank you all. It really means a lot.
Shannon, please let us know how the DECA competition goes uh for the nationals as a follow-up. And uh this is a question for the audience and everybody that's a panelist. So the cow that Lacy was showing, is that one that produces milk or gives us steaks or hamburger? There is, uh if there's no farms, there's no foods. So just wondering if any of you guys know that. And that is all.
Do you want me to put the cow back up?
No, no, sorry.
Well, thank you, guys.
Shannon, can I just say some, um every time I talk to you, I wrote these down because this is like, this is what you exude. Love, joy, and passion for your students and team, humility, because you're constantly celebrating other people and your team, and extremely competent. I'm so glad that you're here at Monroe and I appreciate like all of this. I was thinking of the robotics, I, the robotics teacher at the middle school I work at, when we have block periods, I always have robots going past my door. That's awesome to see what you guys are doing and the level that our students are competing at. I mean, we're sitting here hearing about students going to world dance competitions and ranking at nationals in, in all these different areas. And I love the voc tech. My dad actually used to teach at Renton Tech and worked with uh Renton High School of like, you know, connecting the program there. He's a chief engineer of, of a skyscraper in Seattle now. And he was talking to me and I had a student, Monroe student, reach out to me at one time. He's a Spanish-speaking student. I connected with his family at one point and he was asking and he was under the assumption that he had to go to college. And I was like, well, where's your passions? And he's like, well, I love the vote classes. He wanted to go into engineering. I Googled this, the average income of Snohomish County, individual, not household income, the average income is, hold on. As the, well, it's a twenty nineteen number, so it's probably different now, but forty thousand dollars a year. The average income of Monroe is thirty thousand eight hundred dollars a year. The average income, if he were to go into the, the Electricians Union in Snohomish County, I think it's like the Brotherhood or something like that, it's in Marysville, I think. It, as, as soon as he gets out after getting his journeyman ship and he's getting paid to get trained, is over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. I'm like, do you want to get paid for your training or do you want to pay for a degree? And I, Lee, I'm a college, like, I've been to way too much college. But like, to see him and he was excited about that and he's like, well, this is the classes that I loved and this is, and I'm like, no, this is an opportunity. And just to see like students come out ready to really produce as members of society that I, it gets me so excited because what we're pumping out here, and I know that a lot of times we focus on things that we can grow on, there's been a lot of issues. But man, when I was at the high school um a few weeks ago and in our other schools, to see what you guys are doing, it just gets me super excited. This is the stuff that I got on the school board to talk about and I'm super excited to. So thank you for celebrating these students and amazing staff. Because for me, it gets me very pumped, very excited to see what's happening in Monroe. So I appreciate you taking the time. You're not wasting it. This is stuff we love to hear about, so thank you for that.
I'm happy to hear that. I, and, and thank you. I appreciate what you've said. Um it embarrasses me, but I'm still appreciative. But the um I do think it's, it's pretty incredible. I actually wanted to share with our Director Bumpus and Johnson in the class that we got to sit in and be a part of the circle, um two of those students have reached out to talk about career options, um so including some of the ones that we talked about. So uh it's, and I was like, this is the best week ever, um because I, I get to have some of those conversations. So it's, um it really is a privilege to be here. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Shannon. You're just such, such a light, such a light. Thank you so much for doing all that you do um and for your presentation as well. All right, let's go ahead and move on to agenda item five point zero two, SVEC uh ale report. And that is with Ms. Karen Rosenkranz, who used to be my old assistant principal. So, right, go Bearcats.
Thanks for bringing that up very much. I've been around a long time, so.
Super young, Karen, super young.
Okay, thank you. Uh forgive me if I'm, I thought that uh Leaders in Learning was going before me, but I'm ready. Um so Keith, I think I can share a screen, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see here.
And on Zoom, you want to click the green share screen button and then pick the right screen?
I am there.
All right.
All right, here we go. Um so I know that you guys hear this presentation every year, so I'm just going to go through the highlights. This is a, an annual report that we give to the board uh that is required by uh our rules and regs. And I know that you have probably read most of this, so I'm just gonna uh go to the highlights. Uh one of the things I wanted to talk about was that we are celebrating our twenty-fifth year as a school. Uh and one of the themes that our yearbook is uh is using is twenty-five years of love at Sky Valley. And so they have been taking pictures around campus of students and staff and parents. Uh and I'm really excited to see that uh in the yearbook. Something you might be interested in is how many students are at Sky Valley and and what enrollment has been like. I think one of the things that's most interesting is that right now we have approximately a hundred and fifty FTE uh of students in distance programs that didn't even exist three years ago. And so throughout COVID, uh across the state, ALEs have really been the backbone of many uh school districts. And Sky Valley is, is no different. Uh and even as we return to normal, what we're seeing is some families who are finding that this is really, uh this is really a good fit for them. And uh I think it's exciting uh to see that we have so much FTE in things that we, we hadn't even conceived of before COVID. I do want to give a shout out to our office staff. As you can imagine, the last couple of years, um many parents are, are worried uh and concerned and uh aren't sure what to do. And these four women have not just been uh secretaries, they have been counselors, they have been support staff, and they have walked literally hundreds of parents through the process of um learning how to homeschool and serve their students. Uh they are remarkable. Uh this is one of the things that we report on and it is our, uh the number of certificated teachers that we have compared to our headcount. What is notable about this number is as you see the uh ratio go down, that is actually a reflection of the number of support staff and parents we have supported in getting their uh teaching certificates. And so over a dozen, over a dozen parents and non-certificated staff in the last few years have received teacher certification with our support, non-monetary support. Uh but still just support through that process and that's something we're really proud of. And it's actually a model with OSPI that we have presented on at the uh Annual Conference for Alternative Ed. So I, I'm really proud of that. Um let's get to something more interesting. So one of the things that our students do is our students have designed our logo. Uh and they produce all of our swag. So all of the T-shirts and sweatshirts that are on display and on students and and staff and parents at Sky Valley have been designed. that are on display and on students and, and staff and parents at Sky Valley have been designed and produced by students. Uh, something else of note this year is that our state organization, the Washington Association for, for Learning Alternatives, our students redesigned their logo that was more than twenty years old, redesigned the logo, produced that, and also produced all of the sweatshirts that we just sold to people at our annual conference. And all of those proceeds go to benefit our A S B. And our organization is uh super grateful to our students. Uh, so something else to be really proud of. I, I, this year can't go without saying how grateful and how much we don't take for granted, what it takes to put a playground in, in a school. And I think that people don't, don't truly understand the amount of work, the amount of money, the amount of resources that go into a playground. And we definitely do it, Sky Valley. Our playground uh this year that we celebrated is, is new for us. We have never had a real playground. Uh, so this is something we have been celebrating uh with joy all year long. And we have you guys to thank for that, for supporting us. So what's new at Sky Valley? Uh, we're always reinventing ourselves. It's one of the reasons that we continue to thrive no matter what. One of our newer programs called personalized learning is uh, it says here serving sixty eight high-risk high school students. It's over seventy, I think it's seventy-two or seventy-three. Uh, as of this month, and this program has doubled this school year. And this is really, we regard it as a last stop for students who have been unsuccessful. And that, the number of students that we are seeing walk across the stage with a diploma is incredible. And it's, it's about the relationships, it's about uh the flexibility. Um, and we're just really proud to be doing that work. Uh, we have also uh through COVID added a, a catalog of online courses. We don't seek to become a, a Wawa or an online school. However, to serve our students, we want to have, we want to have a catalog of online courses that they can choose from. Uh, so through that, we have applied through O S P I to be uh to be a multi-district online provider. We need to do that, given the, the size of Sky Valley and the number of, of out-of-district students. Uh, so we have applied to be a, an approved provider with O S P I. Uh, we're currently going through our course survey process, which is something I'm especially proud of. It's something we do every year that reminds us who we are. And we have done it for twenty-five years. And that is we go to our families and we ask them what they want, and then we give that to them. And that goes on to this day, regardless of our size or how much that entails. At its heart, that is, is still who we are. Uh, we are also proud to have a, a new thriving A S B. Um, and we have a unique A S B that has K twelve representation. We've discovered that it's very common to have uh six or seven through twelve, but it is not so common to have K twelve. So we are a leader uh in that, providing a model. And Sky Valley has always been amazing at hearing parent voice. But increasing student voice at Sky Valley is something that we're working on. And our A S B helps us do that. Um, these are just pictures of two classes that are the result of our survey process, things that parents brought up. On, on the left, home and auto maintenance. Who doesn't wish their kids had had that class? Um, I wish I had had that class. And then on the rate, on the right, you'll see great art and artists. And a, an elementary teacher who dresses up as artists and every week students do artwork in the style of that artist. Uh, of course, we are part of the district. We're certainly an unusual alternative school. But we still support all of the same goals uh and vision of our school district, our D E I work, our P L C work. Uh, despite the fact that we're different, that is something that is the same. Um, you've already, already heard about some of the challenges our school store has gone through. I guess what I want to say about that is our teachers and students embraced our, our facility challenges and chose to look at it through the lens of COVID and what businesses had to do to survive. How they had to innovate uh and update and change what they are doing. And I, I could not be more proud of the, the positive direction that has gone. Um, also, something that you may not know is that Sky Valley Education Center is, is truly a leader in this state in terms of alternative uh learning experience uh programs. We have many districts that visit us every year. We are involved at state level and uh O S P I level discussions. Uh, we have the incoming president for our association. Uh, we're on rule review and revision groups. And uh, anyone in our alternative world knows Sky Valley and knows if you want to see best practices and what's going on in alternative learning, you go to Monroe. Uh, and, and so that's something else I'm really proud of. Um, I guess uh the last thing I want to say is we are just so excited uh to embrace all the new families who have discovered us and discovered uh homeschooling uh through this difficult time. And we have so many new folks. And we are just excited to support them uh and support uh their family and their students in alternative learning. And we appreciate the district having confidence in us providing that and, and telling families, if you want to move forward with distance learning, go see Sky Valley and let them help you. And, and we take that uh, we take that charge very seriously. And we aim to deliver the best customer service to families every day. And so thank you for always supporting us and believing in us. Some Sky Valley data to share. Um, I think the thing I'm most proud of is our level of monthly uh progress success. The number of juniors and seniors in running start. And the number of those running start students who earn their two-year degree during high school. I believe that is unprecedented. That a quarter of our kids in running start walk across our stage with a two-year degree is remarkable. Um, and, and worthy of, of note. And you know, we're just excited to get back to business as usual and see what the future brings. We want to invite you to our Art and Science Fair. It's arguably the biggest event we have every year. And I believe it's May twenty-third, which is a school board uh meeting date. And that Monday, uh, we open for business at five P M. So if you're looking for something to do uh before the board meeting, come check out our Art and Science Fair. And that's all I've got.
Thank you so much, Karen. Does anyone have any questions? Comments?
More just a comment. I am incredibly blessed to be one of the many families that call Sky Valley home. And to have experienced everything that Karen talks about, the care, the compassion, the voice that students and parents have. Um, I couldn't imagine being anywhere else and being as supported as I am. And that enables me to be a successful, you know, partner um in my kids' learning as I teach them at home and bring them to Sky Valley for classes during the week. And the teachers are amazing. It is, the other parents are amazing. It is the most incredible community um to when my son even got hurt on Monday at school. With an emergency and Karen emails me afterwards and is just, how are you? You know, how is your son doing? Um, it, it truly is, it's a family when you go there. And I absolutely love it. And I'm so thankful that we have this in the Monroe School District. Uh, I want to see this program here for years to come. I'd love to see it in a bigger, more beautiful building that can house all of the families that want to use it and the capacity that it has to grow and to add to what it is that we have here. Um, it's just incredible. And thank you so much, Karen, for being the person who heads that and who shows so much love and care. It shows in, it shows in every corner of that facility. And I just love being there every single week. So thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. I'm not just the principal. Both of my children uh went through Sky Valley and I I would have never thought that our family would have homeschooled. Uh, but uh we are grateful for Sky Valley every day.
That was me too. Never thought that was in the cards for me, but it was the path that I needed to take for my kids. And it's, it's a beautiful place.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Karen, presenting. And uh, you've done an amazing job. You continue to do an amazing job. So thank you for all that you do. And um for your presentation tonight. Okay, moving on to agenda item five point zero three, sexual health curriculum update. And we have Nile Trimble, the Director of Curriculum and Assessment. Here.
Thank you, President Bumpus. Karen, would you mind uh stop sharing your screen so we can see some of the sexual health stuff? Thank you. So while we're uh getting that switched over, one of the things I'd just like to start off saying with is that a huge thank you to all of our community members that are involved in our committee. Uh, about a, gosh, almost a year ago now, um, I had come to the school board and I think uh Joe Nigle and Chris Cronus were there when we did that presentation. Uh, and just kind of presented the current state of affairs in Monroe School District for our health materials. Uh, and at that time, uh, we had some work to do. We had materials from the nineteen nineties uh that were still being taught in classrooms. Uh, and as you all know, in uh twenty twenty, new legislation had come out. So uh, we undertook a journey of figuring out how to improve that for our students. I had sent you all documents ahead of time. Um, I don't have slides prepared, so I just kind of want to talk through a little bit of where we've been. Uh, and I will bring up a slide on kind of the timeline. Uh, but last fall, we put together a committee of about twenty-five people, uh, including teachers, administrators, uh, board members, parents, community members, uh, a wide, wide range of uh people that I feel like, you know, really represented a lot of the beliefs in the heart of our community uh on that team. We've met seven times throughout the school year uh and have had many a discussion um offline of that through uh email and phone calls as well. Uh, and the result of that work has been pretty phenomenal. Um, we have come up with guiding principles, which are a very high level, it's a very high level document. And the purpose of that is to help us kind of build the lens. When we look at sexual health instruction in the Monroe School District, what are those kind of high level things that we can all commit to, uh, to moving forward with? Uh, we finalized that in February. And then we went actually a level down a little deeper and started looking at some policies and some of the really action statements, kind of grade level by grade level. And we're still finalizing some tweaks on that document that is called our operational practices document. So those are kind of the framework structure pieces that we put together. Uh, and I'm gonna bring up actually a little bit of timeline here uh so that you all can see this. Let me share my screen real quick. And the timeline on this is, you know, we started that process with the guiding principles last fall, which you can see uh in October and November. And then this winter, uh, we actually pulled together uh multiple teachers from elementary, middle, and high school uh to really look at curriculum. Now, this process, one of the things we looked for when we were looking at curriculum is uh, this came from the need of our, that was brought up by our middle school and high school teachers, is looking at a vertically aligned curriculum. So something that where we know and can be confident that the skills and content that's taught from grade level to grade level uh builds on each other and isn't just repeated. So part of that process was looking at companies that uh have materials for elementary, middle, and high school. And we reviewed three different curricula and ended up uh selecting to move forward in the process materials called E T R Health Smart. I'm gonna bring that up also. E T R Health Smart uh is a company, they write a lot, they have a lot of different curricula. And uh the board is gonna be diving into this more later down the line. We haven't yet presented this to our instructional materials committee. So tonight is more an update and not a formal proposal for a vote or anything. But uh, E T R Health Smart has K twelve curriculum. Uh, it had includes, which is really an added benefit that uh I didn't even think that we would get. It includes materials like how do you wash hands? How are you safe right at our younger ages? How are you safe around poisons, right? How are, how are you stay safe on the playground? How do you stay safe on the bus? And then it also includes sexual health materials, um, starting in fourth grade, looking at very high level around puberty and then moving into more specific content in fifth grade, middle school, and high school. So I, I bring up the website also for community to be aware that uh community members can go out to E T R dot org slash Health Smart and can start uh looking at some of the overview of what Health Smart is. Uh, there's videos on here and information from the author. Uh, Health Smart has actually given us uh specific login information to the curriculum. And I'm gonna be posting that on our website uh here tomorrow. So community members can actually log in and read through uh the curriculum if they want. And then we're gonna be seeking feedback uh in April from community members. Uh, with that being said, you know, that's kind of where we're at. The next big step in the process uh is moving on to the Instructional Materials Committee. Uh, so you can see here in March twenty twenty-two, uh, we're gonna be bringing the E T R Health Smart materials forward to I M C. And uh, I M C is gonna be looking at that. Uh, and we'll do a read through of that, looking at the alignment to standards, uh, looking for uh, we actually have a tool, it's a screening for bias and instructional materials tool that will be used. And then if Instructional Materials Committee feels that these are also appropriate materials, then they'll come to the school board later in the school year uh for a And with that, I just pause and open up to any questions from the directors.
I'll jump in and just say that um, I bet, you know, for the board, I think President Bumpus uh voluntold me uh last year or offered that up, or maybe it was Darcy to be on this. And uh man, being able to work with Nile and the, and the community members has, and has been awesome. Uh, Kim has been there through probably almost most of, almost all of our meetings, if not all of them. And uh, we have very dedicated community members. This is like heavy lifting to navigate through everything. And I'm just, I just want to say like, I've been really appreciative of like the time and the care. And there's a lot of questions uh going through all of it. And so I just really appreciate that. So now I just want to say thank you because this is not, this is like a lot of work. And uh, and it's been a lot of work going on in your team. So I just want to say thank you for that. That's been really eye-opening and helpful for, for me to be able to be a, a piece of that process. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Director Kim. I think that, that thank you also needs, you know, that's a big thank you to those, the rest of that committee, right? Because we, we've said it in that committee, we can't do it without everyone there. And there are a lot of people, community members, who don't even have kids in the district. Who have put in hours and hours and hours of time. So.
Any other questions for Nile?
I have a question. Um. This is probably gonna be a hot topic uh in the community. Have you thought about um areas that might be of concern to the community? areas that might be of concern to the community or items that could be considered objectionable? Because we have, we have a diverse community and there's a lot of people in it. Have you thought through that process? I'm sure you've, I've reviewed the material and a lot of it's very good. I'm just wondering about how you
We absolutely have. We've had a number of those conversations amidst our committee and I'd say one of the benefits of that is that advisory committee has a large swath of beliefs and backgrounds in it as well. So I feel like we do get a really good representative sample of beliefs within our committee, larger community. We know that, that there, you know, we represent a very diverse population. And so one of the things we tried to do is find something that can, to the very best of our ability, find that middle ground for everyone involved. And I really do believe that the ETR curriculum meets that need. Is it perfect? No, no curriculum is, right? We're, no curriculum will ever be 100% exactly what you want it to be. But I really do feel like this curriculum meets 99.9% of the mark. And it will update materials for us. It provides materials and things broader than sexual health. I feel like it is a skills-based approach and it definitely is fact-based also and provides the knowledge and skills that kids need while also respecting family beliefs and individual differences.
Thank you, Niall. Any other questions?
I had a question. I was curious, were there any students on the community board?
Yeah, we actually had four of our high school students sat on that board or on that meeting, sorry, on that committee. And so they have been involved throughout the process. A few of them, you know, as you know, Andrew, life gets busy in high school. So we had people that were involved in different activities and weren't able to make it to each meeting, but we had four committee, committee members that were students.
Thank you.
Honestly, I think they had some of the best perspectives and questions because they're talking about straight from the classroom. It was, I'm so glad they were on that. They had great, great feedback.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Niall, for your updating your presentation and for all of that information. Okay, so let's go on to agenda item and we're moving to business. We have agenda item 6.01, consideration of the levy budget advisory committee. Is there a motion?
I'll try this for the first time, okay? I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the levy budget advisory committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to or that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the levy budget advisory committee discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, all opposed? No. The agenda item has passed five to zero. 6.02, consideration of purchase of CTE computers. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve item number 6.02 and consideration of purchase of CTE computers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hey, there is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the purchase of CTE laptops at a cost not to exceed $50,000 before tax and shipping. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, the agenda item has passed five to zero. 6.03, consideration of district optical fiber services. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District approve item 6.03, consideration of district optical fiber services.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Director Johnson, okay. There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the five-year agreement with Zip, Zipley Fiber. Right? Yes. Okay, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. 6.04, consideration of sump pumps for utility vaults at Chain Lake Elementary. Oh, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the installation of two sump pumps at Chain Lake Elementary.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the installation of two sump pumps at Chain Lake Elementary. All in favor, say, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item 6.05, consideration of the purchase of noise reduction soundboards and ceiling tiles at Fryland's Elementary. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School Board District of Directors approve item 6.05 in consideration of the purchase of noise reduction soundboards and ceiling tiles at Fryland's Elementary.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the first phase of the noise reduction in hallway, in hallways project at Fryland's Elementary with a cost of 205,447, 205,447.73 cents. All in favor, raise your hand. All of, well, no one opposes. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item 6.06, consideration of the replacement of the MHS domestic water boiler. Is there a motion?
I move the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the replacement of the domestic water boiler at Monroe High School.
Is there a second? There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the replacement of the domestic water boiler at Monroe High School. All in favors, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Thank you, Molly. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item 6.07, consideration of the Fryland's Elementary storefront replacement project. Is there a motion?
I move the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the selection of Moon Construction as the lowest qualified bidder for the Fryland storefront replacement project and authorize the superintendent to sign the final construction contract to include the base bid, sales tax and 7% contingency.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the selection of Moon Construction as the lowest qualified bidder for the Fryland storefront replacement project and authorize the superintendent to sign the final construction contract to include the base bid, sales tax and 7% contingency. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. 6.08, consideration of acting superintendent employment agreement. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the acting superintendent employment agreement.
Is there a second?
I second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the acting superintendent employment, employment contract. All in favor, raise your hand.
Discussion?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Discussion.
There are a couple of things I'd like to go over with the board, hopefully in executive session. I'm wondering if this is something that we can lay on the table until after further discussion.
Jenny? I'm going to lean on you for this one.
We have to have a motion to put it on the table and that requires a second and then we have to vote and depending on the outcome of that vote, that will determine if it's on the table or not.
Okay, sounds like Director Barnes. Do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors lay agenda item 6.08 on the table pending further discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School Board of Directors move the acting superintendent employment agreement to the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. All opposed? Hey, the agenda or the item 6.08 has been moved to the table for further discussion. Okay, Jenny, I'm going to lean on you once more. Okay, sorry, thank you. Superintendent consent, so we just go through that process and then?
Yeah, so there are two choices. After you have executive session, if you resolve your questions, you can come back out and vote on it then or it can be tabled to the next meeting. Kind of will depend on your executive session.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and finish. So we'll go on to agenda item seven. Superintendent consent agenda. Is there a motion that the, or is there a motion to approve the superintendent consent agenda? Item number 7.07.
I'll move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items that is listed and present in the superintendent consent agenda dated March 17th to 2022.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated March 17th, 2022. All discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, the agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item 8.02, approval of board consent agenda. Is there a motion? Agenda item 8.0, thank you.
I move the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated March 17th to 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated March 17th, 2022. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. We've, moving on to agenda item 9.01, board reports, comments and suggestions. It looks like we have spring conferences from March 22nd to the 25th. Make sure you sign up. I've got, I'm, I'm really proud of myself. I'm already registered. So, that's good. Do we have any directors who have any reports, comments or suggestions?
I've got a couple of things, if I may go. Wanted to share with everybody, all of the events, I think all of the directors have been really busy doing tours, participating in kindergarten night, which was so fun and so exciting to see families and incoming students on campuses. It was really just a great celebration as somebody who missed out on doing that kindergarten tour with, with my youngest kiddo last year. It was really special to be a part of it and to see families celebrating and just seeing such amazing things happening in our schools and it is such a privilege. And I, I want to acknowledge that, that there are a lot of families and parents who would also like to be getting to schools and I, and I hope that that's something that we can bring back soon. As the WIA rep, I wanted to make sure to share with everybody that COVID protocols have changed there as well. So the test to participate is no longer required. And then last time I shared about our gymnastics team going to state and I wanted to share as well that we had two wrestling students qualify and face at state, which is wonderful. And the last thing that I'll say is there is a Neon Stride 5K Fun Run this Saturday at Lake Hyde Park that is being put on by the Monroe High School Sports Medicine Club. And it will support their attendance at the state competition in Tacoma. They have added a sock drive to that event. And the socks will benefit the Tacoma Rescue Mission. More great things happening with our students and staff. So, thanks.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Who wants to go next? Director Campbell, anything to add?
I was going to wait, but okay. I was excited. Thanks for saying that, Director Johnson, about the kindergarten thing. I was excited to hear about your guys' experience. I went to Frank Wagner, got to talk to lots of parents in Spanish and in English. I got to translate from Spanish to English and hung out with Principal Ugo and he was doing a tour and it was all Spanish-speaking parents. And then we had an English, monolingual English family show up with their little guy and tag along. So I hung out in the back and translated into English, which is usually going the other way. And just loved the parents with all the questions that they had. Awesome facility at Frank Wagner. It's such an incredible building. And lots of parents, they had lots of good, he, Principal did a great job of presenting on the dual language program, kind of the changes of a 90-10, 90% Spanish into slowly working into 50-50 and basically supporting those students in their monolingual language first, which is like my first master's degree is all about bilingual education and using the native language to build the content and then fill it. So I was like, yeah, so I was super excited. Got to hang out with Chris Cronin, hang out with Chris Cronis there as well and love seeing, I don't know about you guys, but at the gym at Frank, Oxbow Farms was there, Community Partners, Snow Isle Libraries was there, Monroe Schools Foundation was there. Saw Sarah Lundstrom from Take the Next Step was there as well and a couple others. YMCA had a booth, they were there as well. But lots, this, the staff was all out. I mean, they were helping parents fill out paperwork. And so for me, like, I'm, I'm right with you, Sarah. Like, I want to be able to see parents back in the buildings and the parents want to get back in the buildings. I mean, there are parents going, I'll cut things in the back of your class for you and, you know, my wife, who is a kindergarten teacher, would be like, please come, yes, please. And, but I think that just that partnership with our community and I think that as state regulations have been changing and a lot more flexibility that we're seeing, I'm looking forward to what next school year looks like. Where things like that and, and moving back, you know, Karen had mentioned this in the Sky Valley thing, kind of moving back to what normal, what we knew as normal seems like for me. Or for all of us, not just for me, but all of us. I think that for parents, they're, they're excited about that. Also, just want to give a heads up, we have on the calendar, hold on. The first week of April, the 4th to the 8th spring break coming up for Monroe. So make sure you enjoy that, you guys. And then right around the corner, we've got, we're in the, we just finished WEADA testing because we're no longer doing the ALPA tests or language students and our ESL teachers and our multilingual learning, learning program. Kudos to those guys because that's a lot of data and a lot of work to get to do. And then we're in SBA testing season. And then for all of you guys, AP tests are around the corner in May and it's upon us, you guys. We are in the downhill stretch. So strap on your seat belts because I'm excited for the end of the school year as we're moving lots to do in testing season. So just, we got lots of big things and I'm probably missing a bunch of stuff right now, but there's a lot of pieces happening. So I'm excited to see that. But for me, man, getting into the schools and the cool thing is my spring break is, well, it's kind of cool, different than Monroe's spring break, which means my spring break doesn't match up with my families. But Kim, I'm going to be emailing you. I want to get back in classrooms. So that'll be exciting. So thank you, guys. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Director Barnes?
I don't know. This week I'm a little bit wiped because of what happened on Monday. My brain has been slightly preoccupied, but last week, the kindergarten night at Salem Woods was amazing. The teachers were amazing. The kids, they were so excited just to be there and be together and getting to tour the classrooms. It was truly a special time. I had some good conversations with people. The teachers did an amazing job at fielding a lot of the questions. The front office staff was so friendly and amazing. It was overall a fun experience. I can't wait to do it again next year. But yeah, I think that's kind of all I've got for this week.
Thank you, Director Barnes. Director Whitfield? Okay, so I think everyone spoke. I was able to visit, I'm just going to go through it really quickly. Chain Lake, Salem Woods, Hidden River, Monroe High School and Maltby Elementary. I don't even know, I, I don't know. I, I wrote it down and I was like, oh, that, that happened. Yep, I did. But I have to say, we have I, I wrote it down. I was like, oh, that, that happened. Yep, I did. Uh, but I have to say, we have really beautiful schools. We have really, really cool kids. Um, and we have awesome staff and awesome building leaders. And every time I get to hang out and visit and just tour and have conversations, um, I am more, I, I, I don't know, like I, it blows me away just what an amazing um space we have here in Monroe and in our, in our schools. And so uh, just a friendly reminder to practice self-care. Everybody, everybody on the screen, everybody who's listening, practice some self-care. The weather is a little nicer out. Go for a walk. Go for a walk just cuz, right? It actually does, uh, it, endorphins are great for you. Uh, get some vitamin D, some sunshine maybe. Drink your water, just your friendly reminder to love on you and uh love on the people around you and spread that kindness. And uh, you know, and, and give people grace. All right? And uh, I, that's all.
I, I did, I did remember cuz we went to Chain Lake on the Friday. Uh, Jeremiah, I got to see your wife. I got to step inside her classroom and interview the kindergarteners and ask them what they loved about school. And every single one of them couldn't wait to give their answer. It was the cutest thing ever.
Hey, Molly. All right. Well, it was really fun. We did see your wife, Director Campbell. I pulled Molly away. I pulled, I pulled Director Barnes away cuz she stood right in front of the class. So I was like, we gotta go. But it was a lot of fun and uh really excited that we got to visit that together. So I think, oh, well, you're back, Director Barnes.
Oh, I left. I didn't realize I left. Where did I cut out at?
You.
I got to go into your wife's classroom, Jeremiah, and interview all the kindergartners, which was really fun. They all couldn't wait to give me their answers. And just to see the hallways that were covered in artwork and everything was so warm and inviting. It was Western day. Jen and I were wishing that we had dawned on some cowboy boots and the cowboy hat to join the kids in the festivities. I got to step into your daughter's classroom as well, where they were dissecting owl pellets and it was really cool to get to see that and experience that and see how the teachers are continuing to think outside of the box and make their classrooms these amazing places for learning and engagement for kids that are just so fun and inviting. So it truly was a fun experience.
Thank you, Director Barnes. And I do have to shout out like that though, Vic, they look beautiful. The buildings look beautiful. Thank you. They, they are, they're
Thank, thank you very much. I'll extend uh kudos to all of our staff. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much, Vic. Okay, and with that, I think I'm the last one and we will go into executive session, so. Our board will now move into executive session to review the performance of an employee. It is eight fifteen PM. We will be in executive session for fifteen minutes, thirty minutes. We will be in executive session for thirty minutes. We will return at eight forty-five PM. It's eight forty-six PM. The uh, the board has returned from executive session. We will be voting on item number, agenda item number six point zero eight, consideration of acting superintendent employment contract. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve agenda item six point oh eight, consideration of acting superintendent employment agreement with an amendment to the date, changing it to December seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the acting superintendent employment agreement with the amended date of December seventeen. Or, yes, December seventeenth, uh, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, the agenda item has passed five to zero. Okay, it is eight forty-seven PM and tonight's board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.